Okay, great. So I'm Holly D'Allo Babcock. I'm the Chair of the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. This is a Zoom meeting. Due to COVID-19 and coronavirus cases, and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. And as stated on the agenda, the meeting was aired live via Zoom. It's actually, it's being aired via Zoom. There is telephone access for members of the public wishing to provide comment, which was also on the agenda. Each member of the board is going to be asked to state for the record where you are, why your attendance in person is not reasonably practical, actually just due to COVID concerns is fine, and if anyone is with you, and if you are able to hear the proceedings. So I will call your name. All votes will be done via roll call, but I'll call your name, board members, and then I just need you to say that you're where you are, that you're there because of COVID, whether or not you're alone. You don't have to be alone, but you do need to, if you're not alone, let us know that you're not alone. And then can you hear the proceedings? So. All right, so Vice Chairman Solon.
I am at home. I am participating remotely due to COVID-19 restrictions. I am currently alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Great. Terrific. Kate Stoll will not be joining us today. Liz Brown?
Hi, I am participating by phone because I can't get to Zoom to work tonight. I am in a room alone, but I am not home alone because we are in quarantine. And I am here because it's not practically reasonable for me to be there in person due to COVID-19. And I can hear the proceedings.
Great, thank you. Member Van Conen?
I am at home. I can hear the proceedings. I am alone, and I am participating due to COVID restrictions.
Great. Member Whalen?
I am at home due to COVID. I am in my room by myself, but not home by myself. And I can hear the proceedings.
Great. And Member Williams?
Sure, I'm home due to COVID, participating via Zoom. I am home and I can hear proceedings.
Great. And I, this is Holly Babcock, I am also home. I am alone in my room. I am here because of COVID, and I can hear the proceedings. I also want to make sure that people are aware that we have Attorney Jim O'Shaughnessy here as well. He's our district attorney, and he's here to help us navigate any questions related to a couple of items on our agenda. So, thank you for joining us, Jim. At this point, I'd like to appoint a process observer. I know it's a pretty hard process to observe, but if there's someone willing to do that on the board, obviously some members are not showing their faces, so I'm not going to do a show of hands. Somebody would like to process observe? If not, I will assign it to Cindy. I'm going to ask you to do it, since no one's chiming in, okay?
Yeah, no problem.
All right. We don't have any agenda adjustments, as far as I know, do we, Bob?
No.
Great, thank you. I didn't do introductions of other people who are here, but we do have Drew Mason here, who is our district moderator, here to speak to some things. And also Bob Thompson is here, who's the Assistant Superintendent in charge of Student Services. He's acting as our administrative rep tonight. And I don't believe anyone else needs introduction. We do have some members of the public here, and we welcome you. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor to our district moderator, so he can kind of review for us the annual district meeting, annual meeting discussion. Thank you.
Holly, as I talked about at our last meeting, you have two basic choices for the business session of the annual meeting. The first is to have a normal business session somehow, just like we've done for years. And the second one is to use this alternate process that the legislature has approved in House Bill 1129. The process that we used last summer was relative to a different bill that has expired. So this is our other, the only other choice that we have at this time. I should mention, however, that the legislature is working on a bill. Senate passed it today, and it's due to be taken up by the House later this week. The indications I have is the House will pass it, and the Governor will sign it. One of its provisions allows the governing body to postpone the business session to one or more dates later in 2021, unspecified. So a third choice is just kick the can down the road to maybe a time when we can have an in-person meeting or an outdoor meeting when it's warmer, or something like that. That is a choice that is now available to you, and it comes along with spending authority relative to last year's budget so that you're not in a budgetary bind while you have a deferred annual meeting. To recap the process, you have to provide notice, which has to be fairly extensive. There is a first virtual session hosted by the governing body. You may choose to allow public input, or you may choose not to. And you can choose how to do it. We've traditionally allowed people two minutes per speaker, but you could set different rules, one minute, or we'll allow discussion for an hour, or what have you. Then there is a period not to exceed seven days for public comment that needs to be marshaled together, and strongly recommended that that comment be written down and made available to the voters. A second virtual session, again, you may choose to allow public input or not. And to stress, this is public input, not registered voter input. The legislature recognizes that in a Zoom meeting, it's virtually impossible to hold a large meeting and restrict it to registered voters because you just don't know who's on the other end. At that meeting, the governing body, and only the governing body, may amend the warrant articles. Then there is a period of time of unspecified length for preparing the final warrant and preparing the ballot. And then there is a voting session. I feel strongly that the ballot should be an AccuVote ballot because, you know, it took us five hours to count 11 articles last summer. And if we manage to coordinate this with the Hollis School District and the town, there'll be a lot more articles than that. So just running them through the machine will be, your election staff will thank you. My personal opinion, and I hope that Jim will advise me, is the quote-unquote "drive-up voting session" requirement can be satisfied by a normal election. In other words, you, just what you do. You drive up, you park, you go through the supervisors of the checklist, you get a ballot, you fill it out, you put it in the machine, and you drive away. You don't, I don't believe that the law requires a drive-through option, although, again, this choice is up to the governing body. So those are your basic options. I will be speaking to the Town Select Board on Monday. And my recommendation for them for the local election, which also covers the co-op election, will be, let's just have a normal election on March 9. We had a perfectly successful normal election in November. Let's just do it again and get that over.
So Drew, when you came to us last month, one of your ideas was to do the normal typical election for, you know, for officials, like election, election, and all of the ballot voting, like all the warrants for all, for both districts and the town, all on the same day, which would be pretty trying for, are you still suggesting that? Or are you saying you want to have a local election on the 9th, like we always do, and then have a district meetings vote on a different day?
The latter. I looked at all the scheduling requirements, and there's, because we're in a co-op, we also have to coordinate with Brookline.
Right.
So just trying to fit in all of these meetings on a timeline that fit March 9th seemed not feasible to me. Now, Brookline and the Brookline School District are in a different situation because they're, the school district is SB2, so they're tied to the, whatever Brookline chooses as a balloting date. But that's not a problem the co-op or Hollis School District has.
And are you still thinking that you would, if we were to go with this option, you would want the Hollis Town Vote, Hollis School Vote, Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District Vote, and the Brookline Town Vote on the same day? Is that what you were thinking? Because the Brookline SB2 School District Vote is a little different, right?
Right. I think, well, there's another question on my mind that I'm looking for advice from Jim on. If, if the voting session for the annual meetings, the business session, not the election, happens on the same day, it is my understanding that the Hollis voters can vote in Hollis and for the co-op, and the Brookline voters can vote in Brookline. They don't have to come into Hollis. But if we have a case where Hollis and Brookline are voting on different days, we still need to have the co-op vote on a single day. So in that case, would we have the Brookline voters vote in Hollis or vote in Brookline?
Okay, this is so confusing.
But any rate, my recommendation is do the election on the 9th, and do only the election on the 9th. In terms of the voting day for the business sessions, do them all on the same day because it requires almost the same amount of effort whether we have one, two, or three districts voting at the same time. It's, you know, if we have separate days, it's three times the effort. If we have the same day, it's a little bit more because it's more stuff to do, but.
I'm going to open it up to the board. Does anyone have some, I mean, we all, I'm sure we all have some questions. Is there anyone else who would like to ask questions at this point?
So I think I have a question to Jim. If it's true that we can postpone this a little bit and try to have an in-person meeting, but that would affect our contracts that need to be signed by April 15th, would this legislation or this special order allow us to postpone that until possibly the end of April?
The Governor issued an order last year with respect to the non-renewal deadline for continuing contract teachers. To my knowledge, none of those executive orders have expired because this is a continuation of an emergency order. And although we're up, I don't know, into the 40s, 50s, 60s, those earlier orders are still in force and effect. I'd have to look at them again. But, but I, back then, in a year, you know, nine months ago when we were having this conversation, the issue still was you have statutory deadlines to provide contracts and notice of non-renewal to teachers. The Governor issued an order, but the extent to which that is really something we can rely on is still a concern I have. And I think now that the legislature is taking affirmative action to address some of these issues, I would even be more reluctant to rely on the Governor's order for waiving a deadline that's set forth in a law. So I think you still run into, if you postpone the meeting, in my mind, and Andy's not here, but I, he's sitting on my shoulder, and I can read, I can tell you, he's going to say, postponing it for too long is going to create some real issues with staffing, just the way it did last year. It's going to create a lot of stress, anxiety, and intention for you folks as you get closer to that April 15th deadline.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Hey, Ms. Liz, sort of with the same kind of question, though. If there's legislative movement, is there any legislative movement to basically stat, you know, drop the statute that's going to basically do what that executive order did last year with respect to those deadlines?
Not right now. I mean, the current, the current version of SB2 that's making its way through the legislature doesn't talk about that level of detail with respect to teachers and school districts. There is provisions for budgeting. When you, when you haven't adopted a budget and your fiscal or calendar year has expired, that's part of the legislation, but nothing with respect to teachers. It could be something that they address after the fact. I think there's a sort of urgency to this particular issue, not so much an urgency with respect to the teachers.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
This is Liz again. I just sort of hate to see us do a one-day vote, even if it's simpler. I would prefer to have the co-op voting done on a separate day.
Okay, that's a good point. Is there anyone else?
Liz, are you saying on a separate day from the general, local election, or a separate day from other districts?
Separate day from other districts.
Thank you.
Tom, I think I, I think I see you.
Yeah. Yeah. What is it that, if anything, that we are going to need to decide tonight?
I have, Gina sent a motion to me right before this meeting via email, and, of course, it's in my paperwork, I will find it. It would be to elect, to approve the alternative method for the annual meeting. So like, we kind of need to come, I guess we can, I think the hope was that we would come up with an alternative method and approve it tonight.
Does approving a method categorically dictate a timeline?
I'm not sure if that's, it says, "Motion, my member to elect, to approve the alternative annual meeting format pursuant to HB 1129, Chapter 12." I don't know if the method we choose is the timeline, but I don't know if we can change the method once we've made this approval, if things change.
I don't know why not.
Jim?
I can help answer some of Tom's questions. So I agree, I helped draft the motion. You don't have, you don't have to exercise that or entertain that motion tonight.
I know.
I think in some respects, you folks, I know you want to get ahead of it, and there are some deadlines that we need to be aware of. I've worked on your calendar a little bit, so I'm aware of those deadlines. But I also know that your meeting's quite a ways away still, and you still, you have your public hearing scheduled. You're still going to go forward with your public hearing. None of those obligations change. What does change is you have to, you have to hold those two, you have to hold those two sort of alternative meetings, and there has to be notice prior to those meetings sent out to everybody in the community. So there's some deadlines there. But I think, you know, it may be worth having a conversation and really getting everything out on the table, but not making a decision yet because we want to know what the Governor, what the Governor's going to do with this new bill and what the collective wisdom across the state is going to be because I think that's still being sort of generated. NHMA and all the moderators and all the school district folks were all sort of figuring out what the best way to move forward is right now. And you're not in a, you're not in a rush quite yet. So I don't know if tonight you need to make any hard decisions. I also know that if you decided to move forward with the alternative method, and SB2 passed and the Governor signed it, you're certainly entitled to make a motion and change that, that vote, particularly if the circumstances have changed.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, are you calling it SB2?
No, Senate, well, yeah, because, that's funny.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so, I mean, every year they use the same House Bill, Senate Bill numbers, and the legislation that is proposing to allow the postponement is Senate Bill 2 in the 2021 legislative session, so.
Would it be any more confusing, seriously?
No, I'm sorry for pointing that out because I'm trying to ask you if that counted for folks with town meetings and not SB2. So, yeah, no, I think I'm with, I think I know where Tom's headed. We have to be really careful in our use of language for this because those are hot-button words in our district.
Yeah.
Not only hot, but hot-button, but it, but it will confuse people if they see something that says that we're waiting on SB2. I didn't even know you were considering it.
Right. So Tom, did you have more questions? I feel like you have more to say.
Well, just, I, I understand what Jim says about we have time. Can you, what would be the drop-dead date to make a decision about the methodology that will then still allow all the appropriate notification dates?
I can, can I, let me work on that while we're talking about other things because that's not something I can rattle off the top of my head. I did work on a revision to your annual meeting, hold on a second, your annual meeting calendar with Superintendent and your business administrator. Let me see here, the co-op public hearing is on, what is your current, do you know what your current schedule for the co-op public hearing is?
Well, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that was part of the packet, and it says, "Annual Meeting Dates and Deadlines Draft, Alternative Meeting Method." But then it only seems to specify traditional. I'm not sure where to look for the other stuff.
It's January 27th for both traditional and for the alternative method for the public hearing.
How are you getting that off of that chart?
I can't find that on that chart either.
So.
What chart are we talking about? It's the, it's the second page of the Agenda Packet.
Yeah.
If you look down, it's very difficult to see because there's small prints. There's a very dark bar going across. The next one down says, "Public Hearing Date," where co-op has 1/27/2021 listed.
Yeah, so. Right, but that, but that's under traditional.
Yeah, no, let me just, let me just explain.
Yeah, because we're traditional, not SB2, Tom.
Oh, because we're a traditional town, not a traditional meeting date. I understand, okay. That, so this is all about a, the alternate meeting, but applied to a traditional community, a traditional meeting.
Right, right.
Okay, so yeah, this is one, it says it's 1/27.
Yeah, sorry, let me, let me back up and say, I created that document you're looking at. Well, it was originally created, and then I've added, and I'm not going to say.
And you revised it.
I revised, I won't say I improved it because I don't, I don't like it. But the two, the two parts that are in, all the stuff in red, if yours is in color, are things that I added to, or I modified to make it fit in with this alternative schedule.
Thank you.
Yeah, so if you see where it says, "Notice of informational session" on the left-hand side in red, and then it says, "Informational session," and then it says, "Virtual annual meeting," those are the three HB 1129 alternative procedures. And I changed your public hearing date to 1/27 because I needed to fit in a public hearing and these other two dates, and the voting date all sort of within, you know, the month of February and March. So, and I did this before, I did this before New Year. So, you know, it's not like super fresh in my mind, but that. So, so the answer to your question is, 1/27 is the day of your public hearing, and that day is a little bit moved forward from when you would normally hold your public hearing because your, your quote, "annual meeting" is on, proposed is on 2/23 and 3/1, if you follow, if you follow. And it has to be those dates because you need to fit two in, and your public hearing needs to be, can't be greater than 25 days before your annual meeting. So it kind of compresses the timeline a little bit. So the answer to your question is, your public hearing is on the 27th. So a couple of weeks before that, you're going to have to make a decision.
Can I ask you?
But does that, does that lead us to being able to have this decision no earlier than our next, than our real January meeting? That's what I'm, that's where it seems to be leading me. What's the date of the January meeting?
The 20th, I think.
I want to stick my own, my finger in here. The schedule that Jim has showed you is predicated on trying to have your voting session on March 9th.
On the 9th, right.
You are under no obligation to do it then, even if the.
So moving that date up moves the whole schedule up.
Right, that's what I was going to ask that. So if we change our, if we don't, if we don't have our voting day on March 9th, then we can push this, kick this can down the road a little bit?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm creating like, I'm creating a framework, but it's like, I'm sort of doing it in a vacuum. I don't know, you know, usually the process is I create this document, you guys review it, and then, you know, I make revisions, and we triple and double, triple-check it to make sure the dates all work. But this is all kind of exactly predicated on a 3/9 voting date, and these are all dates of if you elect to do alternative method, this is sort of what the schedule would look like. This is not your current schedule because currently you're geared up for a regular form of annual meeting.
So first of all, it means we don't have to make a final decision tonight on how to, which method. So it does give us a little more time. But Tom, to your point, I still think we need to make a decision by, at our next meeting, mostly for a couple of reasons. I think the voters need to know how we're going to do this, and I think the supervisors and the people who do all the work behind the scenes need to know. So I think we don't have a lot of time, but I don't think we have to decide tonight. That's my view of it. Maybe other people feel differently. Beth?
Holly, I just, I do agree with that. I just, to kind of piggyback on what everybody else said, I actually don't like the idea of making any kind of final decision tonight. One, because we do have the luxury of time to see what the state does. But two, and maybe even more importantly, just to get our plan at least out there tentatively for the community to gather feedback. And then that gives us time. So I'm all for, you know, next meeting, if we can, you know, kind of finagle that and get information out there. But I think it's really important to kind of produce a plan first and allow people time to hear about it, understand it, and give feedback, then come back and vote on it.
Is there anyone else who has to weigh in? Anyone else want to comment on Liz's idea of like, being separate from everyone else? Because as we're kind of talk about this.
Hi, Holly, I, I agree with Liz. I think trying to do three or four voting sessions in one day will confuse people too much. And the co-op usually has the most interest, really, when you come down to some of these meetings. So I think that we should do our own. I don't think we should combine it with the town or another district.
Thanks, Cindy. Krista, did you have something?
I'm in agreement with that. I think it's, I know Drew hates us when we say this, but I just think it's really difficult to have everyone together. I think it just gets confusing and muddled, and, and we have important matters to vote on, so.
Can I, I don't understand this comment because it's just like the local election. You walk up to the supervisors, you get a stack of ballots, you fill them out, you stick them in the machines, and you go. It's not, I don't understand any conflict that you may be seeing.
Well, Drew, I think the conflict is just what you said, a stack of ballots. And if there are people that are uninformed, they're not going to really know what all they're voting on. If each district has their own presentation. they're voting on. If each district has their own presentations and their own talk going into this vote, I think it's a different attitude and it's one vote and they know they're voting for the co-op where a bunch of ballots doesn't really discern to them. And we know that we have some public that really doesn't do anything until they walk in the voting booth. So we just need to cover ourselves.
I will say as a, as a Brookline voter who has last to vote for the Brookline School District stuff on Election Day, I, I think the voting process is what is objectionable. But that objection, I don't know that it matters whether it's done in conjunction with other ballots or not. I know in terms of how it relates to the Brookline School ballot, you've got the people who understand it, the people who participated all along, which is a vast minority, and then you've got the people who just show up to vote. I don't know that having it on a different day than the other ballots will alleviate any of those problems. My potential objection to having it on the same day is just the choice of the day. I think that our concern about having it on the, on the Tuesday was something I heard voiced before and the ability to get a necessary turnout on a weekday.
Yeah, I've got a concern about the 9th, doing everything on the 9th. I like the idea that the local election will be on the 9th. I'm not as concerned as other board members are about us being separate from other districts. I, I can imagine because we're going to have the polls open for a long period of time, that the volunteers that run the polls, it'd be so much easier on them to just be able to get through the ballots. And I, I think as long as our virtual meetings are on separate days from everyone, people who want to get educated on our information will have it. I hear the concerns of the board members because, because there's concerns. But I definitely can see both sides of that. So I'm not married to either one. Beth? I can't hear you.
No, I feel the same way as you, Holly. I can see where it's a concern, but it's just so much to orchestrate and put together. And I hope that people, you know, it is generally the co-op that seems to drive a lot of votes, people to show up for meetings or show up to vote. So I think that they'll come out to vote. They'll have access to our information, have access to the meetings and the presentations. So I'm okay with either option.
Yeah, so my biggest concern with this method, and this is not anybody's doing, I, I am concerned about the lack of the public's ability to make amendments. And I realize that there's not much we can do about that. And that's, I just was hoping and really praying that we would be in a position to have an in-person meeting. And, you know, that's my ultimate hope. But, I mean, I can't change the COVID-19 crisis. So, anybody else want to weigh in? The, not from the, we will open the floor for public input in a few minutes, so.
If I'm hearing this right.
Go ahead, Liz.
Go ahead, Tom.
I was just looking for some clarification of what is actually being presented to the legislation, for legislation. Is it just to move the voting day or is it to move the whole process later?
The bill I've seen allows the governing body to move both the election and the voting day, or the business session is the language it uses, later in the year. And all.
How about the information sessions?
They're all related to the business session. So if you move the business, the voting day by a month, you can move the information sessions by a month.
So could we, in fact, postpone, if this passes, we could potentially postpone? And then, so we have three choices here. Number one is to try to do an in-person meeting. Number two is to use this alternative method. And number three is to postpone the business meeting, which we could then make that be a traditional in-person meeting.
Yes, and, and subject to Jim's advice, I don't know, see any reason why you can't change your mind. In other words, vote to postpone and then, you know, pick one and then the circumstances change and say, okay, no, we're going to do it a different way. As long as you do it with adequate notice to the voters.
Right.
I don't think anything, any decision you make is irrelevant.
Tom, did you have another question? And I know Liz and Beth.
It's not another question. I just, I think, I think it's been answered, particularly with what you said, Holly, is that if we postpone, it potentially leaves open the option to have an in-person meeting at a later date or an alternative sequence at a later date. Is that a correct interpretation, assuming that the, that the bill passes?
I see Jim with his finger up.
Yes, that's correct. So, so what's going to happen if you don't make a decision, basically, I'll try to frame this in a way that'll help you be a little more black and white. If you don't make a decision to pursue the alternative method without changing it by the middle of, basically the middle of this month, then you're, you can still hold the alternative method for a meeting. It's just going to have to happen later in March or April or May. It can happen at any point in time really over the course of the spring, but you won't be able to do it March 9 and coordinate it with the other towns because you won't have enough time to fit all those other meetings in. Okay, so that's really.
And Jim, our deadline as far as the contracts are is the middle of April.
April 15. That's your deadline, April 15. Just to be clear what we're talking about, there's no deadline to issue contracts. There's a, there's a deadline of April 15 to provide notice of your intent to non-renew a teacher. So it's really kind of the opposite of an issue of contract. So typically you issue contracts and those non-renewal notices at the same time, but the statutory deadline is for the notice of non-renewal. If you, if you go past that deadline, then you can't non-renew. You know, it's something we talk a tremendous amount about. I think in effect, you probably don't non-renew a ton of people anyway, just as a matter of course, so.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is, it's, it's a date, but it's not a important deadline that needs to necessarily drive this decision-making. And it sounds to me like, it's interesting because Tom asked a bunch of the kind of questions that I was going to ask. It kind of leads me to my conclusion that I sort of like the flexibility of not making a decision and hoping for the best. That maybe in April or even early May that we could have something that more resembles a traditional meeting, which I think could be better for things that are on our agenda this year, including those contracts.
Okay, I know.
Sorry, Holly, I'll just add one more legal requirement that's in the current version of the postponement law, which we won't call SB two. Is that you have to hold, the board will have to hold a public hearing prior to electing to postpone its meeting to some later date. It's not clear, there's, again, there's no common wisdom yet about if you postpone, you declare your animal, your animal, your annual meeting date, let's say in May. Can you postpone it again? Can you change it? Those are sort of things that are, haven't been really decided. But you do have to hold a public hearing before you actually elect. So what you would more or less be doing is, the other thing to think about is, you'll then run, I think your scheduled deadline for your traditional public hearing is, like, right now you're scheduled for February 3. According to like, let's pretend we never talked about the alternative method and we were going to have a regular in-person meeting on March, whatever, 3, your public hearing is currently scheduled for February 3. And you need to hold it within 25 days of your annual meeting. So if you're getting close to February 3, you're going to have to hold that public hearing and at some point before then, you're going to have to really make a decision about what you're doing. Because you're just going to be coming up against these deadlines and your administrators are going to need to finish budgets and get geared up for the actual process to begin.
Yeah, I definitely feel like we need to make a decision at the next meeting. I mean, I just, we wanted to have this meeting here so we could get more information. What are the other districts, kind of coming back to you with, Drew? And the town?
The town, I, you know, I talked to them in December. They, two of the selectmen seemed very interested in the alternative process and the other three didn't give me any indication. I think, I mean, my general feeling is nobody wants to have an in-person meeting in March. I mean, but with all the news that's going on about the slow rollout of the vaccines and the, the new variants that are floating around, you know, it's more like, well, what do we want to do? I suspect that, you know, this is just a feeling, not any knowledge. I suspect that the town is going to want to get their business session done on the sooner side.
So they'll use the alternative method to do that?
Yeah, yeah.
And then, in the Hollis School District, are they voting on this tonight as well?
They're talking about it tonight, and I think that they're gonna, they're gonna basically follow whatever it is that you do.
Well, I mean, not to be cute, but I don't necessarily feel like we have to do what the town does. For example, we're the folks who send our kids back to school. And so I have to feel that if we are safe to send our children, and we believed it to be, continue to be safe, to have our children in the school, wearing a mask, staying six feet apart, that we as a board have to still be committed to, that it's possible and safe to have ourselves in a building six feet apart, wearing masks for a meeting. Otherwise, I think we're inconsistent.
That's a valid point. Okay, are there any other comments on this? Because I think if this, yes, Beth, I never got back to you, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay. But Liz just kind of touched on part of what I was going to say because my preference is always going to be for in-person if we can do it safely, obviously with that caveat. But, you know, and, and wearing masks and staying six feet apart is part of it. March into April into May, you know, there's going to be more rollouts of vaccine. But the other big thing that changes, and I don't know that, you know, how we would be able to do an outdoor meeting, but that was something we talked about before, that is probably one of the biggest safety measures is not being inside a closed building. So just another thought about, you know, if we're pushing and hoping, I know I am, to have in-person safely done because it allows for two-way, it allows for feedback and allows for more voices to be heard. I think that's so important. And I agree with Liz, if our kids can be there and be safe, we can put certain parameters in place and safety, you know, it's just, it's layers of protection. So when you wear a mask, you're six feet apart, you're potentially outside because the weather's maybe warmer. I don't know, just a thought, but that's what I was thinking.
I, I, I have a problem with this. It's one thing to be in a classroom with 20 kids or a board meeting with six board members and two members of the public who are all masked and socially distant. It is a very different thing to have 600 people in a big gym for four, five, six, seven, eight hours where they're speaking and yelling and screaming and, and all the good stuff that happens at a co-op meeting. That is not safe as far as I am concerned.
I would agree with you, and that's why I say for me, you know, of all of the safety things in place, whether you're talking about masks or distancing or a vaccine, to me, the number one thing is it's not inside. To me, that's the biggest safety thing is we couldn't really, I don't think we could safely hold a meeting right now in March, April or May inside. No matter how, you know, if everybody's wearing an N95 and has a vaccine, it doesn't matter to me. I agree with you, that's not safe. I don't know about, you know, weather and options for outside, but that to me is one of the greatest protections is not being in a closed space.
Anyone else?
I have a question. Jim, last year we did everything on target and then flipped the switch a couple of days before. If we did that again, ran all our meetings just as we would the public hearings and everything, and then in, before the meeting in March, we would have time still to do two virtual sessions, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and you may, you may even need at that point, if, if too much time has elapsed to hold a, you know, a supplemental Zoom public hearing. So, and that's doable and that the law already contemplated doing something like that. But yeah, it's, there's, there's ways to do it all. It's just, if you shift in one direction, then there's a whole bunch of other stuff that has to follow. And that's why that spreadsheet is, it can become kind of a nightmare to coordinate all those components. But you have time and we'll continue working on it and figuring it out.
Sounds good.
Well, the tricky part is also if we are in accordance with this, we have to send a notice to every taxpayer.
Voter.
And that's not a simple task. So, I mean, I truly was asking you the other day, Holly, who does this? Do we do this? Does the SAU do this? Does the, like?
I don't know. Who does this, Jim?
The SAU does it on your behalf, but it's your duty, your obligation.
So, Bob?
So what's the cost of that?
Well, I will tell you that there are very roughly 11,300 voters in the co-op, registered voters. So if it's, you're going to cost 50 cents each for a moderately thick document, it's $5,500.
Yeah.
But it's also the time.
Does it have to be?
That's just postage.
Yeah, either, yeah, that's just postage. That's not, you know, arranging to have somebody mail them out and, you know, stuffing envelopes and all of that sort of stuff. I just have a hard time considering how conservative we are about our budget throwing, you know, probably double that number for a mailing.
Legally, that's what we would have to do, right?
I think the wisdom is.
If we chose one of these alternative.
Yes, this is what I wanted to clarify for you, Liz. You only have to do the mailing for the drive-up version of the meeting. If you just simply postpone the meeting, you do a public hearing. It's basically it. Because the postponement is you're, you're still holding a traditional meeting, it's just happening at a later date. Whereas the drive-up method is a completely new alternative way of holding a meeting and that, and because of that, you have to provide this notice to everybody. I think the understanding when I talked to Andy about costs is the, the cost of, they're already built in costs that you budget for to conduct a traditional indoor meeting. And, and an outdoor drive-up meeting, particularly coordinated with the towns, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be expending some of those things. You wouldn't have to pay for, you know, the tech and all the other things that go on in your traditional meeting. So I don't know if it's a wash or one's more expensive than the other, but.
Yeah, and ultimately, I'm not making a decision, I mean, the money is a factor, but ultimately, I'm not making a decision. I am much more concerned about the fact that I think it may be more difficult for the co-op to accomplish the things that the co-op needs to be able to accomplish in a drive-by meeting than we are in some sort of meeting that looks more like a traditional meeting. And even if we have to do that outside on the turf field, you know, in coats and blankets, I still would rather see that than do it in a drive-by format.
Okay. I hope we've given you enough feedback at this point, Drew, to let you know that we really don't like the idea, clearly, of not having our regular traditional meeting. And that's a real struggle. It sounds like to, that's the consensus I'm sensing from the Zoom room. So we're going to struggle with this and we will talk about it. It'll be on our agenda again for the 20th and hopefully we'll be able to make more of a decision at that point.
All right, I have, I have two questions. One is for Jim. I believe you, you said a couple of times in the meeting that the public hearing on the budget has to be 25 days or less before the, the meeting. I believe that the RSA says 25 days or more. In other words, it can be no sooner than 25 days before the meeting. You're muted.
That's correct. What I'm, what I, what I'm trying to say is if you hold a public hearing too soon. what I, what I'm trying to say is if you hold a public hearing too soon and then you schedule a, yeah, I mean, it's just when I put the calendar together and you schedule the public hearing and you're trying to stay within that 25 to 40-day window. And then you move the dates around, you, you want to move the public hearing dates around. But I, I agree with that. It's, it's, you can do it sooner, you can't do it. You have to hold it at least 25 days before. You can hold a second meeting within the 25 days of supplemental public hearing. You generally don't want your public hearings to be too far out. But yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
And did you have another question, Drew?
I did. I have a question for, for the, for the board or for, for, you know, my, what I think I heard was that there is no appetite for the board, from the board, to have a traditional meeting in March. Yeah, so.
I would agree, I would agree. I mean, unless somebody wants to chime in, I think that everyone on the board is understanding that a traditional meeting in March would be very, would be really challenging and not something we are pursuing. However, I, I get the sense from at least a few board members that the in-person factor is pretty important to us and having a traditional in-person meeting and that many of us feel like we'd be, I don't want to speak on behalf of everybody, but in the Zoom session is probably easier. It seems like the consensus I'm getting is that an outdoor Zoom, an outdoor regular, typical, annual meeting would be our preference. If anybody disagrees with that strongly, I would like them to speak now. No, so I think you got your answer on that.
No, that, that's good. That, that helps me because I'm, I'm herding cats between five districts.
Yes, you are. I appreciate that.
And so I, I'm just trying to fit, just like Jim is trying to fit the pieces together, I'm trying to fit the pieces, the logistics together into something that won't kill me and my staff
Right.
to, to get it all done for you.
And, and on behalf of our, our school board, I do want you to know that we truly appreciate the time and effort and energy that you put into all of this and your staff. We really do appreciate it and we know that it would be easier if we could just give you an answer tonight. But these are big questions that we have to really struggle with and it's our, the, the vote matters to us and our, and our, and the constituents' ability to comment and to amend is very important to this board. So Liz, did you have something to say?
Well, I was just going to say, and we really appreciate the effort that you've made. And I think you recognize that the co-op is special. I believe that's the only one of the districts that you've ever worked with that has taken you to court. And so we so far. And, and I really do want to just kind of echo our thanks and appreciation for you trying to recognize that, that we have somewhat different issues than some of the other districts are and try to have some patience with us. And I really appreciate your time and effort. So thank you.
Thanks so much. Thanks, Liz. All right, I'm going to move off from this and at this point, I'm going to move into public input because maybe some other members of the public would like to make some comments. This is a Zoom meeting, so we need you to identify yourself. Do we usually ask for people in public to come on camera? Bob, does that?
No. They would raise their hand by going to the participants' window.
It's been a while since I've done a public input on a Zoom meeting, so just tell me. Please, when you make, if you, if you'd like to make a comment, you need to raise your hand on the little window thing with Bob. And then he will address you and allow you to speak. We follow the same protocol that we do for every meeting with public input. We allow for two minutes of comment. We ask that you state your name and address for the record before speaking. We ask that you stay focused on topics related to our agenda and that you address your comments to me. This is not a comment and question and answer time. It is simply a time for us to hear your concerns and comments. And finally, we of course expect respect because this is trying. So at this point, I'd like to open the floor. It is 7:56. I'd like to open the floor for public comment. Are you seeing anything, Bob?
There is no public comment at this time.
Great. Okay. So.
Yeah, caller, call-in user one. Raise their hand.
They have to unmute them, or you have to unmute them. Hello, call-in user one.
Yes, this is Eric Power. I don't know how you put an ID on this. Eric Power from 12 Westview Road in Brookline. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. I've been, I don't have the, the visual going today, so I'm going to call in. But I did read the, the plans, order of events that was put together on page two of the agenda. And I did think that that was a very good plan to follow the HB 1129 mechanism that's been authorized by the state last year. And I would, I, I think that, you know, I talked to people in town and people would like to do all of the voting and the election on one day. That way, they only have to go out and, and, you know, get, get exposed and all that at one time. And I agree with Drew Mason that it's not incrementally much more difficult to do that. You do get more ballots. So in Brookline, we would get a Brookline School District ballot, a town ballot for the town meeting if we do this as well, and then also the co-op. And then we would have our elections for those three as well. But, so you could have six ballots, but, you know, I think people would rather be able to do that all in one visit to the polls. And I think folks in Brookline would prefer to vote in Brookline. I know we had drive-through voting last year for the co-op. And I think it hurt Brookline a little bit because people had to drive over to Hollis. And so having the ability to do it all at one time, I think it, it puts less wear and tear on the supervisors of the checklist and the staff. I think it makes things easier. I think we do have a timeline here that looks like it works and that it does, you know, follow the legislature's approved procedure. And I think, you know, if you do this, you can also share the costs of the the mailer, the mandatory mailer that goes out, because you could group the Brookline Town, the Brookline School District, and the co-op for Brookline residents in one mailing. And then in Hollis, you could do the Hollis School District, the Hollis Town, and the co-op in one mailing. So that could defray the costs of that part of it as well. So I, I'm in favor of the 1129 versus the new SB2 or whatever it's being called method that still has to go through the legislature, has to go through the House, like House of Representatives. It was not done today in their session for whatever reason. But I also noticed there was a, maybe is there a typo on the virtual annual meeting? In the, I think in the, I guess that was for Hollis. It looks like I said 2025-1 or something, but everything else I thought was right. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Is there anyone else?
I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Okay. Oh, Chris is back. Okay. So at this point, I'm going to close the floor for public input. I'm happy to see Krista because that is the next item on our agenda. And I was going to scramble and have to do this presentation. So at this point, we're going to move on to the discussion and we are providing an update on the tentative agreement with the Hollis Education Support Staff. And Ms. Whelan is going to be doing that.
Hi, Jim.
Just, just a point of order, is there any document that goes along with this?
Um, it's, we're sharing, oh, you don't have it. Okay. Yeah. Let me.
Here, I'll, I'll email it to Tom. I'll email it to the board right now. Is this just the presentation that you sent out today, Krista?
Bob actually has the most, the most.
Recent one?
Yeah, let me. I will send it.
You want me to share this?
And.
The issue is I'm not on a, on a video Zoom. I'm just on a phone.
Right, that's what I'm figuring out. So Bob, can you email it to Tom Solon? And to Liz, I think Liz, can you see anything or? Is Liz here? Did we lose Liz?
Yeah, I just can't unmute myself that fast. Yeah, if you can email.
We'll email it.
Send it right now.
Is there anyone? Cindy, you have it, right? Everyone else can, will be able to see it on the screen share.
Yeah, I can see it on the screen share.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let me share screen.
Thank you.
And we are good to go.
Okay. All right. Yeah, how do we? What did I do?
That might have been me.
There we go. Okay. Okay, thank you. So we, the board and HESSA negotiated in good faith. We had the pleasure with working with the HESSA team again and it was very cooperative, worked very well together. The HESSA team was Ann Robinson, who is the HESSA president, Lisa Henney, who is a paraprofessional at the high school, and Lori Hayes, who is the unit of service director. And the board side was Holly and Kate and Kelly and Bob and myself. And I really do want to thank everyone and I want to thank Kelly and Bob. Kelly was amazing by putting numbers and everything together. We kept changing everything on her and she was able to throw all that together. Oh, we're on the goals. All right. Here we are. So getting together with the administrators and with the board, we felt that the goals were to get a contract that allows the district to hire qualified staff at competitive wages. One of the issues we've been facing for the last few years, not just the last three years, but even before that, is hiring custodians and having enough custodians in our buildings. And we wanted to try to figure out a way that we could do that, and I will talk about that way in the next slide. But we struggle because we are competing with just the districts around us, including our local districts. Brookline, for example, pays a lot more than we do for custodians. Amherst pays a lot more. Milford, some of these districts have their own union for their custodians. But in addition to this, all of our staff, all of the HESSA staff, we can't run our schools without them. And that's simply put, we can't run our schools without anybody who works with HESSA. All of our support staff is important. But we have been struggling a little bit with hiring the custodians. And we feel like last time we worked a lot on the paraprofessionals and getting them up to a more competitive level. And this year, this time, we felt we needed to work on custodians. We also wanted to keep our insurance caps to help our business office work with budgeting. And, but we also, at the same time, wanted to discuss the costs versus the benefits for the taxpayers. That's important to us. We think about it all the time. And the amount of money that we're going to ask the taxpayers to give. So, next slide. So one of the reasons, one of the ways we were trying to work on helping the custodians, because again, we were not paying them enough money, we feel, we feel. But in addition, their job has changed pretty significantly in the last year. And I don't, none of us see that changing. Custodians are working very hard in there and they're doing work that they were not doing before and they're doing work on a moment's notice. And, and in, working in different ways. So in an effort to try to balance out how we could pay more without burdening the taxpayer too much, we decided to move the custodians up a category. So in category one, the custodian, a starting custodian is now in category two. The maintenance worker and ground maintenance worker have moved to category three. And the building maintenance shift supervisor has moved to category four. And the building maintenance supervisor and ground maintenance supervisor have remained in category five. And again, the, the difference is Brookline right now pays $14.99 per hour for a starting custodian. The co-op, right the second, pays $11.86 per hour and Hollis pays $11.42. Starting in 2021, under our plan, a starting custodian would make $13.23 an hour, still under Brookline, but $1.37 more than they make now per hour. So if we can change to the wages in this contract, in year one, we have the custodial category shift, both on-step and off-step. And then for all the rest of the table, on-step 2% increase, off-step 2.5%. And then in year two, on-step 2%, off-step 2.5, and year three, on-step 2%, off-step 2.5. The custodial category shifts in year one are maintained going forward. Next slide, please. So the wage breakdown looks like this. In year one, it's a 2% increase that gives an average overall of 7%, which I, I know that people, that number seems too much. But the truth is, when you put it into the change, so the change to a dollar is $1.37 per hour, so 7%. So that's where that comes from. That's a lot. That's a higher percentage. And you can use it how you'd like, but if you put it into perspective of how much it actually is. So the on-step cost would be $51,000, the off-step would be 40. For the total for the wage breakdown for the year one to be $99.65. Year two, we wouldn't have the shifts. We would just have the changes in percentage. So that'd be 70. And year three, same thing, 68.727. Going to the next one, to insurance changes. We stayed with the caps, so we are not by percentages. The teacher's contract is different than the HESSA contract. So with the GMR increasing significantly, we did feel that we needed to give an increase in the caps. Because the truth is, if we're going to work to try to give an increase in salary, but then it's all going to have to be spent in the insurance area, then we aren't serving our purpose of trying to find people. So it's a $50 cap for both single and two-person and a $25 cap for family. So the district cost for all three years would be $18,000. So the GMR this year is 10.9. Kelly was estimating the GMR in the next two years to be 8%. That's an approximation. We don't know for sure, but we do have to budget. Next page.
Krista, before you move on from that slide, could you, is it, what's the $50, is that a per week or is that a?
That's per month.
So that's the cap per month?
Yes, that's the increase in their cap per month.
Oh, it's an increase in the cap?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So on the next page, you see the current districted employee costs. Right now, we have 23 people taking the single. The premium is $7.53, the district cost is $7.53. The employee doesn't pay anything for the single. In the two-person, we have seven people taking it. The premium is $1,500. The district cost is $1,200. Employee pays per month $2,9759. Currently, we have no one on the family plan, but the numbers are as such. If you move to the next slide, this will be the change and the costs for the employees, the district, and the premium. So in year one, excuse me, you'll see the GMR would take us to about $8.36 for a premium. The district would pay $8.10, the employee would now pay $26. For a two-person, they would pay $4.12, and for a family, $9.72. It does increase. It does increase each year what an employee would have to pay for their insurance. And next page. We did add a flexible spending account. We consider this a perk. This is not a cost to the district, but it is a nice plan available to the staff. So the total warrant amounts on the next page for year one, the wages are $99, the insurance is 18. So the total warrant would be $117, in year two, $88, in year three, $86. And that is it for the highlights of the HESSA contract. Are there any questions? Thank you, Bob.
Anybody have any questions for Krista related to the tentative agreement, which we will be voting on tonight?
HESSA has already voted on it and accepted it.
Accepted.
Just procedurally, do we vote on this in public?
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions, any comments? Okay. So at this point, we were going to move on to the discussion of the Articles of Agreement between the Districts of Hollis and Brookline. This was brought up at our meeting last month. Jim is here to answer any questions, but this was a, Jim and Dawn prepared and went through past annual meeting minutes to make sure that all of the previously voter-approved amendments on the Articles of Agreement that all occurred before 2004 or at 2004 were reflected in this document, our Articles of Agreement, before it's posted to the SAU website. So I think there was some question as to whether or not everything was captured. And at this point, I'd love if Jim would like to at least speak to that. He's here, I think. Jim?
Yes, coming on.
Thank you.
Hey.
So.
That was really lucky, because I was just about to go upstairs and call it a day.
Yeah, I caught you.
So it was, it was an interesting process, because Dawn had pulled up, I don't, I wasn't prepared to speak to this with like a level of detail that I usually have, but Dawn had pulled up from prior years, the town reports for the town of Hollis, which contained, as you're aware, it contained the record of prior co-op board minutes. And the real focus of, if my memory serves, the real focus of, of that was, there was an issue with respect to the adoption of the Budget Committee and Article VII not being present in the Articles of Agreement. So I, I, it was kind of simple. I just read the, the approved warrant article from, I believe it was 2004, where the, where the Budget Committee was adopted by the cooperative voters, and I incorporated the language into Article VII of the, of the Articles of Agreement. The next, that was, that was pretty straightforward. There's nothing really special in Article VII, because the, the ability to adopt a Budget Committee is a statutory right, and the duties and obligations of the committee are really set forth in the statute. And all I did was just make an internal reference to that statutory provision. It's not necessary, because the Budget Committee does exist, regardless of whether their presence is reflected in the Articles of Agreement. But I think it's important that it be reflected in there. The next change that was made, which is really the bigger change, was Article 15. Article 15 is language that speaks to the procedure for reducing the number of grades that are covered in the Cooperative School District. This language was passed at the 2004 Annual School District Meeting. It had previously, it was certified by the State Board in May of 2004. I reviewed both the minutes from that meeting pretty extensively, as well as read all the minutes in the floor amendments to try to discern what exactly had happened. And all I did was incorporate the lang, like, all of this language was in the 2004 warrant article, all the language in Article 15 was in the 2004 warrant article. I incorporated all that language. There are two places where there were amendments made on the floor, which I also incorporated. One is in paragraph two, I mean, paragraph C to B. And that speaks to capital projects after March 2004. Not, I'm not really sure about like the nature of that amendment. I was the president for the meeting in 2004, but that was amended made on the floor of the meeting. And the only other substantive amendment was Article E, which spoke to how the article itself could be amended. There's a provision that says that the article can be amended by supermajority, except those provisions developed under Section C1C, which is the finance plan, which would require a supermajority vote of two-thirds of those present voting on such amendment. That amendment was made on the floor of the meeting and passed by, by a vote at the meeting, as reflected in the 2004 minutes. I believe that, oh, and the only other, I mean, the, the impetus for the change was just to make sure that the Articles of Agreement, current Articles of Agreement, reflected the, the change made last year to Article V with respect to the calculation of operating expenses and, and the, the additional dollar that is assessed to Hollis prior to apportionment. That, that was really the impetus for the change. But in the process, we discovered that two previous amendments had not been incorporated into the Articles of Agreement. So my, 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 I don't, I don't think of my process as being discretionary, really, at all. It was just being very like calculating and thorough and reviewing records and documents and making sure that we, we were careful and we got things correct. I did clean up the formatting, if you scroll to the very bottom. I, I guess that was discretionary, but it's not substantive. But I cleaned it up so that the, so that the organization of, of the, of that, this, this like, whatever you want to call this postscript, or this section is organized by article rather than by date, because if you wanted to make a reference to when an article is modified, it would, I thought it made more sense to be able to do by article rather than have to search through the amendments in the years to find out when a change was made.
Thank you. So Jim, just procedurally, is there anything the board needs to do with this? I mean, we, we were kind of asked to make a vote on it last month, and it seemed kind of, it didn't seem like it was within our purview to vote on this. This is voter-approved, you know, amendments in the Articles of Agreement.
Yeah, I mean, it's an interesting question. I haven't, there have, there are, there are very few opportunities for school boards to vote on amended Articles of Agreement, because they don't change that often. And once the voters vote and the State Board certifies a modification, it, it is part of the Articles of Agreement, whether you vote on it or not, whether you type it into a document or not, it's, it's a part of the Articles of Agreement. So I think your task, if anything, is a purely administrative task of acknowledging that the Articles of Agreement were, were updated consistent with the prior votes of the legislative body. You're not approving it, it's not your job to approve it.
So we could make a motion to that effect, what you just said, which I missed, because somebody was texting me, because they lost.
Did anybody pick that up? Because it was probably really, no, you're just, you're just voting to acknowledge that the Articles of Agreement reflect the changes made by the legislative body.
Is that a necessary vote, or, or a permissible vote?
I think what, based upon what Jim just said, it's like, not a necessary vote, because all we're doing is, because even if we were wrong, and the legislative body had actually approved another amendment, that amendment would still be binding on the district.
Right.
Yeah, point of fact, Article 15 was adopted in 2004, and it hasn't been present in prior versions of the Articles of Agreement. I, I didn't know anything about that. And the, the older version of your Articles of Agreement didn't have Article 15 in it. So I went and cleaned that up, so that it accurately reflected all the, all the changes that I was aware of.
Beth?
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to say thank you, Jim, and to Dawn. I know this was not a fun or easy task, and it, it was very, very needed. But on that same note, that's the one thing I've been a little confused about. It's super helpful, what you've done, and with the formatting at the bottom, to have the dates in there. But as somebody that's newer to the district, trying to understand, see the changes, I, and this is more maybe, you know, the SAU in terms of having this available. But we want the newest, you know, version of this to be readily available for anybody to access. I think it's important to be able to see the previous ones as well, because there's not a lot of transparency if we can't see an older version. And for me, that's hard to say. So I've, I've had a lot of questions about how do we know the changes are reflective? And, you know, of course, we can tell people to do, just as you've done, Jim, to go back through the minutes, you can watch, you know, and go through those meetings and, and see for yourself. But I think it would be really helpful to see what changes were made. And the best way to do that is just to have those other versions posted. But, you know, clearly, the most recent at the top, because people are asking, and it's hard to reference back when you don't know what the changes are. You know, for example, when we do policy, we, we do scratch-throughs or highlights of the changes. But there's nothing up for debate here. Like you said, Jim, I mean, it is what it is. This is what was decided. But in that same, it's not easy to see what changes were made. So maybe in the future, we could have those posted, because I think that would be really helpful to explain, so people can see the older versions, that in fact, we're doing this in a transparent manner.
Right, thank you. So I'm getting the sense that we don't need to vote on this, that we can just allow this to be posted. Is that right?
You, you could, like, what I sense, I can, I can see Liz's, Liz's number keeps blowing up. She keeps wanting to talk. So my, I'm picking up, you know, even through Zoom, I can, I can sense these things, that there's a little bit of discomfort with like, adopting something that, it's like, wait, so we're just trusting you, Jim, and, well, okay. It makes sense to me to maybe have, like, in a, in a normal world, what I would do is I'd say, why don't I come, I'll print out all the documents I have, and all those records, and all the old versions, and I'll sit down with the school district clerk, and we'll go through it all. That way, she, he or she, I think it's a she, right? Still the same clerk. Your, 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 Diane, is Diane, is that her name?
Yes.
Yeah. So Diane, you know, gets a level of comfort with where we are, and can confirm with her own, with her own eyeballs that these are, in fact, changes that were part of the record and reflected in the minutes. And then she can, I could write a letter, and she can sign a letter saying, to the best of my knowledge, I certify that this is a true and accurate copy of the most up-to-date version of the Articles of Agreement. And then you could receive that and simply ask the superintendent, direct the superintendent to post this version and all prior versions on the SAU website. And that's, I can do, any of those things are doable, and I'm happy to help you guys get a level of comfort. But I do think your voters need to just have access to the most current version of whatever the articles are at some point.
Yeah, I feel like just having you on this call, this will be reflected in the minutes, and, and knowing that you've done the work that you've done through the process is enough for someone like me. I, I don't speak for everyone. My only concern is, I don't think this board really wants to take a vote on this, because I feel like we, that would send a message that somehow we're voting on the Articles of Agreement. And we, we, the Articles of Agreement were voted on by the, the voters. I mean, that's, so that's my sense, is that we don't want to vote on this. But we would, I don't think that, um, but can anyone else pop in? I don't want to take any other comments from the board members.
I think you ought to have, you ought to have a process for closure, though, because to me, just as your corporate lawyer, it's like, okay, so what, what's, what's the status? Because you've sort of taken your hand off of it, now it feels like it's, it's not worth anything. So it seems to me that you could ask your clerk to review and certify the Articles of Agreement, so that they can be posted for the public. And you're not, you're not actually doing anything, except for asking the clerk to do, to do the job of the clerk. And I'm sure she'd be happy to do it, and I'd be happy to work with her and help her out, if that's, if that's helpful.
Does that work for all the members of the board to pass it over to that? Anybody want to chime in? Within a, with a, I don't want, don't do it that way, Holly?
It, it seems like it's a duplication of work, because it's, it sounds like Jim's already done it.
Right.
So why, so what I'm wondering is, what, what prevents, what prevents you, Jim, from you certifying it in the same way that you would any other legal document that, that we, we entrust you to create?
It's an, I mean, it's an, it doesn't differ that much, except for, I don't have real authority to certify public documents, create public records that way. And it's really the role of the clerk. I agree, it would be somewhat duplicative. But I don't see the, I would basically just review things in, in a Zoom meeting. It would probably take a half an hour or less. And it's, she'll probably want that anyway. And I, nothing prevents me from doing it, really. I mean, except I'm not the clerk, so I'm not sure it carries, it carries much weight other than the words I write. So anyway, it's up to you guys, how you want to do it.
Anyone, people? I only have two faces, huh?
Holly, I think, I think Jim's giving us an advice as an attorney. And if he thinks that we should ask the clerk to certify it, I think that's what we should do.
Okay, anyone else? Seems like that's, so you say that's about a half an hour Zoom call, Jim? You set up with the, with the clerk? Okay.
I'll reach out to Diane and, and loop you in.
Okay, that would be great. That would be the best way. We'd just like to close this.
Sure.
Go on something, that would be great.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I don't think we're gonna need anything else, yeah.
Can I leave for real now?
Yeah, we're good, thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, bye-bye.
At this point, we're going to move on to deliberations. Hold on, let me pull up my motions. Okay, I need to see what action the board will take regarding the tentative agreement reached with the Hollis Education Support Staff Association. I need a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board and the Hollis Education Support Staff Association. Moved by Beth, seconded by Krista. Okay. Is there any comments or discussion on this motion? Okay, then I'm going to call for, is there any? I, I don't see any. Bob, do you see any, any raised hands?
Just.
Tom?
A quick comment that, as the passage, it would have been preferable to see a copy of the final contract in its entirety with these changes, just so that we can see them in context. I'm not going to hold up the vote or, or demand it, but it's, it's just easier to understand the progression if those, if we have the full document with revisions.
Be noted. Okay, thank you. I'm at this point, I'd like to take a roll call vote. I'm going to go by the way I see your faces on my Zoom screen. Beth, you are first.
I.
Krista?
Krista, I.
Cindy?
Cindy, I.
Liz?
Hi.
Tom?
Tom, I.
And Holly, I. So that motion carries 6-0. We do not have to do any kind of motion on the Articles of Agreement, because we've moved them off to Jim for yet another thing. So at this point, I need a report out from the Process Observer.
We are on time. We stayed on time for everything. Great job, Holly.
Okay, and, um, so, and then we are going to move into a non-public session, and we will adjourn after that. And for the public, our non-public will be on a different Zoom. So I need a motion that the board by roll.
I think we're in a non-meeting, aren't we?
Non-meeting, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a non.
Non-meeting, not non-public.
Okay, thank you.
Do we not need a?
We just need a motion to adjourn.
We do not need a non-public. So we're going into a non-meeting, and we just need a motion to adjourn. Thank you. So, so, so that's moved, the motion to adjourn is moved by Beth, seconded by? seconded by.
Cindy.
Krista, great, I was just about to call you, Krista, today. Okay, so I need a roll call vote on that. So Beth?
Beth, aye.
Krista?
Krista, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Tom?
Tom, aye.
Liz?
Liz, aye.
Holly, aye. So we are adjourned, and then Bob, you will send us a link, right?
Yeah, so I'm going to end this meeting. I'm going to set up the new Zoom meeting, and then I'll invite everyone, you'll get a calendar invite, like you normally would.
Thank you very much, and thank you publicly.